Good evening, if we can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening.
Who's talking about it, exemplary people?
First up on the agenda is exemplary people and we're going to be recognizing this evening are Unified Sports and John is going to do a little introduction and talk about this.
Sure, I'd like to have Kim Green, Kate Gweli, Nicole Schwartz, and Danielle Hawley come on up, we have certificates. Unified Sports has been a program that was started several years back, but now it has moved down into the middle school. So we have a program from middle school to high school. It's a program where our students with special needs work with what they identify as typical peers and they go in a sports program. This group, and I know some students are going to do a presentation later, but we just wanted to honor them and thank them for their hard work with Unified Sports and we have just some certificates for you and thank you for that hard work and it's a great program in our district and if you ever feel, if you ever want to be uplifted, just go to one of the Unified Sports games and it's great, or practice. It's great to see our kids working together and these ladies have really made this happen in Monroe and we can't thank them enough. So, thank you very much. So first, Kate Gweli.
Should've put these enough.
Thank you.
Kim Green?
Don't leave because you're going to get a photo to put on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Danielle Hawley. And I know you guys are up for the presentation, but we just wanted to recognize you first here. So again, thank you for letting us. And then our presentation's a little bit into the program.
All right, we will move on to report of the chairman. I have nothing tonight, except that I don't make the snow calls even though there's an email stating otherwise.
No, it was you.
We will move on to presentations and we do have a presentation by our Unified Sports. So if you, are you using the screen? Okay, so come on up.
Okay. So Unified Sports is a program that combines athletes with and without disabilities on sports teams for training and competition. The Pioneer Program was a partnership between the CIAC and Special Olympics of Connecticut to expand the opportunities for students of all abilities. 1992 it started, we have three models, the competitive, player development, and recreation. Ninety-six percent of the high schools in the state of Connecticut have a unified program. There are only eighty middle schools in Connecticut that participate in Unified Sports. The current focus is increasing programs at the middle school level.
You need to state your name and address for the record.
Manaya Friend, 34 Aspen Lane.
And Catherine Salmonak, 64 Forest Road. All right, well, hi, I'm Catherine Salmonak.
And I'm Manaya Friend. And today we're here representing the Massey High School Debate Club and we're here to present the idea to you of standing desks. We believe that this could drastically help the flow and energy of the school as it would increase the productivity of our students. Standing naturally lowers the risk of obesity as it burns many calories and Harvard Health says that elongated periods of time sitting can lead to cardiovascular disease, diabetes, and even cancer. Thus, these standing desks would help us to take a step towards improving the health of Massey students. In our research, we determined that the Monroe Public High School proposed operating budget under the category of furnitures and fixtures increased the funds by 300% in 2018. We could assume that it would be feasible to possibly utilize a portion of this funding towards these standing desks as standing desks would classify as classroom furniture. There are many viable and cheap options online and we think it could really benefit the school. Some of these are between $75 and $150. One in specific that we found was the Adapt-a-table with the dimensions of 36 by 22 inches and it fits two students. And we think it could really help in classrooms to help kids move around more and be more active in their day. Another possible idea would be to have maybe the workshop classes make these desks, which would decrease the price as you'd only have to purchase the materials and then the classes would be there to repair the desks if possibly needed.
Now, studies have shown that some tasks are just completed more efficiently while sitting down and that's understandable, however, that does not mean that we should shun away from the idea of standing desks because just as there are instances where sitting may be more efficient to complete a task, the same instances are seen while standing. One of these instances personally for me is presenting. So if I can please ask if I'll even stand for a moment? Thank you. Now, I want you to all think of your average workday, your sedentary lifestyle, sitting for eight hours a day or more depending. Now, I want you to just think having your pen, your paper, your iPads, your computers just 18 inches higher at standing level. Your restlessness is dissipated, your mind motivated and attentive to work. Now just imagine the capabilities of the students of Massey if only they had this option. You may be seated. So, studies have shown, new study's done at the STEM Academy itself, that students in a traditional setting classroom are one half more times likely to fail the course opposed to those in active learning at standing desks, for example. Also, these active learners have shown to score even higher on identical tests given to both them and students in a traditional setting. Also, besides academics, in Stanford University did a study where workers in a sit-to-stand environment tended to report 78% of the time a pain-free back day. Also, to bring this a little more closer to home, I have a quote here from a teacher at Massey who actually utilizes standing desks in her classrooms and me of which I was personally in her class and I loved it. And the quote from her is, "I have a lot of students that enjoy standing at the table. They are more tentative. Students will tell me, 'I'm so glad when I come here because I stand all day and I can actually stand here and take notes and work with my peers,' as the table in her room fits three to four students." She also said, "Students who are tired," she will tell them, "Go stand." And she says that they are definitely more attentive than while they're sitting there in their desk falling asleep. So, overall, what me and a portion of the student body are planning to do is to allow some standing desks in a few selected classrooms throughout Massey in order to give students the capability and the variety and the choice to sit or stand as they please at what best suits them. This will hopefully bring about a small change within our Massey environment, moving from traditional to an active learning style. And also, it may, this small change might bring about a even bigger change in my peers' education here at Massey and that's what we should be utilizing. Thank you.
We also have a petition with a little over 100 signatures from the student body at Massey High School supporting the idea of standing desks. And I can pass that to you.
Do you also have the information about the desk you said 75?
It's, the cost is 78, 77 and the dimensions are 36 by 22 inches.
For the specific one?
For this one, but there's many different ones.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have any committee reports this evening?
I do have the minutes from the last CEA, CES committee, so we can put those in.
Great, thank you. All right, moving on, we will move on to public participation. You need to state your name and address for the record.
Manaya Friend, 34 Aspen Lane.
And Catherine Salmonak, 64 Forest Road. All right, well, hi, I'm Catherine Salmonak.
And I'm Manaya Friend. And today we're here representing the Massey High School Debate Club and we're here to present the idea to you of standing desks. We believe that this could drastically help the flow and energy of the school as it would increase the productivity of our students. Standing naturally lowers the risk of obesity as it burns many calories and Harvard Health says that elongated periods of time sitting can lead to cardiovascular disease, diabetes, and even cancer. Thus, these standing desks would help us to take a step towards improving the health of Massey students. In our research, we determined that the Monroe Public High School proposed operating budget under the category of furnitures and fixtures increased the funds by 300% in 2018. We could assume that it would be feasible to possibly utilize a portion of this funding towards these standing desks as standing desks would classify as classroom furniture. There are many viable and cheap options online and we think it could really benefit the school. Some of these are between $75 and $150. One in specific that we found was the Adapt-a-table with the dimensions of 36 by 22 inches and it fits two students. And we think it could really help in classrooms to help kids move around more and be more active in their day. Another possible idea would be to have maybe the workshop classes make these desks, which would decrease the price as you'd only have to purchase the materials and then the classes would be there to repair the desks if possibly needed.
Now, studies have shown that some tasks are just completed more efficiently while sitting down and that's understandable, however, that does not mean that we should shun away from the idea of standing desks because just as there are instances where sitting may be more efficient to complete a task, the same instances are seen while standing. One of these instances personally for me is presenting. So if I can please ask if I'll even stand for a moment? Thank you. Now, I want you to all think of your average workday, your sedentary lifestyle, sitting for eight hours a day or more depending. Now, I want you to just think having your pen, your paper, your iPads, your computers just 18 inches higher at standing level. Your restlessness is dissipated, your mind motivated and attentive to work. Now just imagine the capabilities of the students of Massey if only they had this option. You may be seated. So, studies have shown, new study's done at the STEM Academy itself, that students in a traditional setting classroom are one half more times likely to fail the course opposed to those in active learning at standing desks, for example. Also, these active learners have shown to score even higher on identical tests given to both them and students in a traditional setting. Also, besides academics, in Stanford University did a study where workers in a sit-to-stand environment tended to report 78% of the time a pain-free back day. Also, to bring this a little more closer to home, I have a quote here from a teacher at Massey who actually utilizes standing desks in her classrooms and me of which I was personally in her class and I loved it. And the quote from her is, "I have a lot of students that enjoy standing at the table. They are more attentive. Students will tell me, 'I'm so glad when I come here because I stand all day and I can actually stand here and take notes and work with my peers,' as the table in her room fits three to four students." She also said, "Students who are tired," she will tell them, "Go stand." And she says that they are definitely more attentive than while they're sitting there in their desk falling asleep. So, overall, what me and a portion of the student body are planning to do is to allow some standing desks in a few selected classrooms throughout Massey in order to give students the capability and the variety and the choice to sit or stand as they please at what best suits them. This will hopefully bring about a small change within our Massey environment, moving from traditional to an active learning style. And also, it may, this small change might bring about a even bigger change in my peers' education here at Massey and that's what we should be utilizing. Thank you.
We also have a petition with a little over 100 signatures from the student body at Massey High School supporting the idea of standing desks. Can I pass that to you?
Do you also have the information about the desk you said 75?
It's, the cost is 78, 77 and the dimensions are 36 by 22 inches.
For the specific one?
For this one, but there's many different ones.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? All right, we will move on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Donna. The first thing we're going to do is review the fund statement and Gabby's going to help with that, starting on page nine.
So, the first thing I'm going to tell you is that as of Friday, the balance in the insurance reserve was $616,000. John and Jack were extremely happy about that when they told them that news. I'm going to now tell you that I don't know how long it's going to last because, you know, we get our bills and we have to pay them and so we'll see. Hopefully, you know, again, it's a start of a good trend and we're moving in the right direction. Additionally, we are starting to spec out the truck, the F-350 that we have in our budget. We'd like to get that started a little bit early so that when July 1 comes, we can actually purchase the truck and have it ready for next season. It's a lot easier to do it now rather than over the summer. We're also starting to look at blanket purchase orders, you know, starting to ask people, "Oh, you've had this purchase order open since August, you haven't really touched it, do you think it's time to close it? Are you still going to need it or what are you planning on doing with it?" It seems really early, but we are midway through January ready, which is a little scary and we close, we close in five and a half months and the year seems to be flying by. It's, other than that, we're starting to look at summer plans, we're going to start talking to the principals, we're going to start scheduling meetings about things like air conditioning moves and summer projects just so we have a better idea of what we're looking at for the summer. That's kind of where we're at in finance.
All right, so the next thing on the agenda is the goals and action plans. And I know that the Board of Ed wanted to talk about setting up a meeting with all the administrators as we have five years ago to look at our goals and action plans. The current plans were from 2015 to 2018 and as we showed in September, we've met all of those goals. So now it's time to, to move on and to do other, to develop other goals. What we've done in the administrative group, just to do some pre-work, is we've looked at the mission statement and we, we're going to, we'd like to share some ideas with the board on some changes to our mission statement when we meet that day. So the administrators got together, looked at, you know, what we're doing in the district to see is, is, does our mission statement do everything that we wanted, say everything we wanted to say? So, that's some preliminary work. We've also looked at what topics we're going to cover when we bring the goals and action plans to the board because we do have some broad goals and broad topics and we're looking to see if we need to change that. So, again, we're doing some preliminary work so that when we sit down, we'll really have some focus and we'll be able to get together on all that. There will be a framework that we bring to you for you to consider as we move forward in that day. So, that's, that's the work that we're doing ahead of time. We do have a suggested date of May 14th, but the other Monday is April 30th is another day that we can meet. I don't know if you want to pick the day now, but last time I said we'd come back with a suggestion of a date, so. May 14th is a Monday.
And it's an
to sit or stand as they please at what best suits them. This will hopefully bring about a small change within our Massey environment, moving from traditional to an active learning style. And also, it may, this small change might bring about a even bigger change in my peers' education here at Massey, and that's what we should be utilizing. Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have a petition with a little over 100 signatures from the student body at Massey High School supporting the idea of standing desks. Can I pass that to you?
Do you also have the information about the desk you said 75?
It's, the cost is 78, 77, and the dimensions are 36 by 22 inches.
For the specific one?
For this one, but there's many different ones.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? All right, we will move on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Donna. The first thing we're going to do is review the fund statement, and Gabby's going to help with that, starting on page nine.
So, the first thing I'm going to tell you is that as of Friday, the balance in the insurance reserve was $616,000. John and Jack were extremely happy about that when they told them that news. I'm going to now tell you that I don't know how long it's going to last, because, you know, we get our bills and we have to pay them, and so we'll see. Hopefully, you know, again, it's a start of a good trend, and we're moving in the right direction. Additionally, we are starting to spec out the truck, the F-350 that we have in our budget. We'd like to get that started a little bit early so that when July 1 comes, we can actually purchase the truck and have it ready for next season. It's a lot easier to do it now rather than over the summer. We're also starting to look at blanket purchase orders, you know, starting to ask people, "Oh, you've had this purchase order open since August. You haven't really touched it. Do you think it's time to close it? Are you still going to need it, or what are you planning on doing with it?" It seems really early, but we are midway through January ready, which is a little scary, and we close in five and a half months, and the year seems to be flying by. It's, other than that, we're starting to look at summer plans. We're going to start talking to the principals, and going to start scheduling meetings about things like air conditioning moves and summer projects, just so we have a better idea of what we're looking at for the summer. That's kind of where we're at in finance.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so the next thing on the agenda is the goals and action plans. And I know that the Board of Ed wanted to talk about setting up a meeting with all the administrators as we have five years ago to look at our goals and action plans. The current plans were from 2015 to 2018, and as we showed in September, we've met all of those goals. So now it's time to move on and to do other, to develop other goals. What we've done in the administrative group, just to do some pre-work, is we've looked at the mission statement, and we're going to, we'd like to share some ideas with the board on some changes to our mission statement when we meet that day. So the administrators got together, looked at, you know, what we're doing in the district to see, is, does our mission statement do everything that we wanted, say everything we wanted to say? So that's some preliminary work. We've also looked at what topics we're going to cover when we bring the goals and action plans to the board, because we do have some broad goals and broad topics, and we're looking to see if we need to change that. So, again, we're doing some preliminary work so that when we sit down, we'll really have some focus, and we'll be able to get together on all that. There will be a framework that we bring to you, for you to consider, as we move forward in that day. So that's the work that we're doing ahead of time. We do have a suggested date of May 14th, but the other Monday is April 30th as another day that we can meet. I don't know if you want to pick the day now, but last time I said we'd come back with a suggestion of a date, so. May 14th is a Monday.
And it's an off-meeting week?
It's an off-meeting week.
And what time would you propose?
I mean, if we, we could do it 6:00, 6:30, we can have a dinner and have a working, sort of like a working dinner to, it's going to take a couple hours to really dive into this.
Yes, yeah.
And then we might have to come back for a second time, or at least part of a board meeting, to firm it up. But I'd like to get a date on the calendar so that we can make sure all administrators and secretary sergeant leaders are available.
Is May 14th good with everybody at 6:00, 6:30?
Yes.
Everybody? Good?
And it'll be here at Massey.
Okay. Everybody prefers 6:00 or 6:30. What's it better?
It doesn't matter.
Later?
6:30?
6:30 good? Okay, so let's do it 6:30.
When you said here at Massey?
It'll be here in the library at Massey, yeah.
Here in the library?
Yeah. We used, we did it a couple of years ago, the first time we did it before 2015, by Central Office, but it wasn't, it was too crowded, and we couldn't split up into groups. So we'll split up into groups, have board members and administrators in groups, and kind of look at the framework and see where we want to go with it.
Okay, perfect.
The next thing on the agenda is the regional plans to develop fiscal efficiency. And there was an article in The Post about, the title is Monroe Eastern School District Joins in Regionalization Talks. It's not regionalization to combine school districts. It's looking at services and goods that we purchase and combining with other districts to see if we can save some money. So that's the first thing. I think there's some thought out there that we're going to regionalize school districts, and that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about using school districts in our region to save money, to get some cost efficiencies, because it's a larger amount of things we can buy. Last week, Jack, Gabby, and I met with schools from Bethel, Brookfield, Danbury, New Milford, Newtown, Region 9, 12, and 15, and we worked together with our business managers to try to come up with ways that we can save money. What could we use? And we really split it into three categories. There were contractual services that one of us worked on, non-payroll things like hardware, computer hardware, software, capital reserves. And then there were duplicate services, like, you know, special education, we're all doing the same kind of thing in that, or transportation, we're all doing the same. So we split into these groups, and we looked at what we have in common and how we could save some money. So, it really worked well. We have another meeting scheduled. I really think it's the first time that I can remember that we're just not talking about it, that we're really diving into it. Kay met with the Southern Fairfield County Special Ed Directors, and they're doing the same thing. And already, we're seeing some positive results when it comes to transportation and combining transportation and using other kinds of transportation. And once Kay finishes all that and be able to put it together, I'll bring it to you, and we can bring it forward, because we will think we'll be able to save some money with that. So regionalization, as far as services and goods, is really starting to take hold in the districts in our area. We, they really, we're really working to see if we can save some money. And again, the little things like the fire extinguishers and the big things like transportation. So it's promising. It's not a quick process, believe me. We were talking about transportation, and all 12 districts, or nine districts that were in the room, all have contracts with bus companies. You know, there's no way we're going to all be able to say tomorrow, "Okay, we're going to do this," because we have contracts that we have to. So we're looking at dates that we can do it. We might have to phase it in. These three are, contracts are open, they can work on it, then when the next three come in. So it's a lot of talk, but actually some real concrete things that are happening. So we're kind of happy about that, and I think it's something that we're proud of, and we're going to be on the front lines with that, so we're glad about that. Okay, update on district enrollment. You have at your place a copy of the withdrawals and the additions since July 1st. And you can see the net total of students, there were 79 students added to the district since July 1st. That's taking into account the kids that withdraw and taking into account the kids that entered. So we have 79 more students since July 1st. So, and if you, if you look at that, you can see where the pluses and minuses come from. Again, I'm not sure that it tells a story other than we are stills. Once school starts, we're still getting students who are coming in and registering. And we put this together on Friday, and we've already heard today, two more students are coming to Massey. So.
So that 79 is 81 now?
It's 81. But, you know, tomorrow, two more students could leave. So we just had to pick a point in time, and our point in time was Friday, and it's a total of 79 students. And you can see grade nine, actually, grade five and nine had the, grade six had the most at 19. And, you know, again, that's not a big deal if it's spread out, but when you start talking in elementary school and you have one grade that has a lot of students moving in, that, you know, that could become a problem. And it's something that we're looking at, and we need to keep in mind for next year.
What are, what is our increase, you know, our net, you know, increase slash or decrease since our official enrollment on October 1?
We did not do that.
Okay.
We did it since July 1st, but we could do that for the next time.
Yeah, just so we know, like, where we are compared to our official enrollment.
Yeah, we can do that for next time.
Probably up something, but not grade 79, like October 1st, yeah.
Right. And we didn't include kindergarten in any of this, because when you looked at the numbers, all the kindergarten was given, so we didn't include that. So I wanted to share that with you. Jack, do you want to give an update about the curriculum committee?
Sure, yeah. So we just wanted to give you a quick update on Curriculum Council. As you might recall, we were looking at homework and pros and cons of homework, and we've had a big committee this year. We've said to everyone involved, "If you want to show up, the more the merrier." And as a result, we've had a larger-than-usual committee, which has been really good. We've had a lot of good dialogue, we've had good readings around homework, and we've actually started crafting some statements that we're hoping to bring to the board as a proposal to consider as something to be included, to use to revise the homework policy, the current homework policy. So as part of this work, the current school climate surveys that are going out, and hopefully you're seeing those links as parents, they're going out this week. There's questions in the surveys about homework, and that feedback will be used to help to determine some of the pattern statements, as we're calling them, to be used to develop new policy proposal language to bring to the policy committee and ultimately to the full board. So we see this coming to fruition in March at some point to the policy committee and then to the whole board, so we can see this process all the way through.
It's really been an interesting process, reading the research on homework. Again, it's all over the, all over the place, but there are some common themes that the committee's looking at that we hope to incorporate into our policy and to make homework, you know, a better experience for kids. We've seen some, some interesting kinds of things across the state, where there's homework reprieve, where a school says, "On this weekend, there is no homework for kids, so they can take a break." It's very interesting, some of the things that people are looking at across the state on homework, so.
We shared a letter from a neighboring high school, I think it was Thanksgiving, if I remember right. Yeah, Thanksgiving, that period of time, they declared it no homework period of time. So it's a break from the rigors that go on during a school year, because really, the requirements in schools have increased over time. So it's trying to find a good balance in giving students a high-quality education, but also finding time for family as well.
And it's a volunteer committee. It starts at 4 o'clock. And you wouldn't think you'd have, you know, these tables and these seats full, but it is full. People are really interested in this. And even today, we got an article from somebody who's on the committee and said, "Look, I found this article about homework," and shared it with us. So, you know, I think it's good for us to have this dialogue, and once we kind of put together what the committee thoughts, we'll bring it, once we put together the committee's thoughts, we'll bring it to you for your feedback and where you want to go with it. Okay, the other thing that I didn't put on the list, but I'd like to talk about is, we'd like to start posting.
I just had a question about the homework. Did you, you guys going to look at like a meta-analysis?
Actually, that's, ASCD had a very good article on the largest meta-study that was done. It's a meta-study from around 1980 through 2010. It is the largest available meta-study. It's basically every current study done on homework. So that was the basis for our readings.
Okay, great. Thank you.
The thing I'd like to talk about now is to start posting our anticipated openings, because remember, we have a process. We have to post internally first. We have to wait 10 days, and then we can post it externally after we do interviews. So we'd like to start posting. I mean, we do have a lot of anticipated openings for next year. And, you know, again, depending on what happens with the budget, we always post these as anticipated openings. So there are four anticipated openings at Font Hollow, one at Stepney. There are two Massey anticipated openings, a tech ed position and art position. There are three guidance counselors in the district, one at Font Hollow, one at Jacquet Hall, and one at Massey. And guidance is one of those very difficult positions to fill, so we'd like to post that as soon as we can. And we just want to let you know that we'll send that out in the next week or two to get some initial interest, to see if people want to move. And then, once that happens, then you know there's that whole, you know, domino effect. Well, this person's coming here, now I got to post this position, so. Like to just say, can we move forward on the postings?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all.
Great, thank you. Anybody have any questions for John? All right, hearing none, we will move on. We have no old business tonight, so we will move on to new business, and we have upcoming negotiations for our nurses' contract. So we would be looking for a Board of Education rep or reps to sit on that. Anybody interested? And for new people, what happens with those is there is a team. You're not by yourself negotiating. It is made up of John and Jack and Gabby and our attorney from our law firm, Bill Conen, who is actually the lead negotiator. And then as a, as the representative, representing the Board of Ed, you would, you know, talk to them. It's pretty, I wouldn't say simple, but they kind of are going to be in line with our other negotiations that have already happened, that we would be looking for the same contract with the same, you know, increases and insurance that all the rest have to bring everybody into alignment, so it's not too.
It's a small group.
Yeah, it's a small group, so it's not, this is a good one if you've never been on negotiations before, because they are such a small group, and it's not as complex as some of the other ones. When is the timetable, John?
We're thinking, I talked to the rep today, they're thinking March will be the start of it. We'd like to get it done before June, but you do, if it doesn't happen before June, we still have the summer, because they don't work in the summer.
And do you know when you're meeting on these? Have they requested a specific?
They have not. So we would want to meet like at the end of February as a committee to see what our proposal would be, and then it would be sometime in March where we would meet with them to start our first negotiations.
And are you meeting day or night? That's what I meant.
Well, I mean, I think we can make that decision, depending on where the board wants to go. If they, if they want to do day, we can make that suggestion. If you'd like to do evenings, that's not a problem. We've done that before, too. But I'd like to have, that's why if we could say it now, that when they call and ask, I could say, "Yes, you know, we have a committee together, and we want to meet at 6 o'clock or 7 o'clock."
Anybody interested?
Alan, great, thank you.
And Alan, you would want evenings, right?
Yeah.
What would be the time?
6 o'clock is fine.
Perfect, thank you. All right, we will move on to item B, which is Monroe L Oil Tank. So as everybody knows, the Monroe L Oil Tank, the way it works is our oil tanks are underground, and we are allowed to have them underground, but the Caviat is, the state of Connecticut says we need to replace those oil tanks every 25 years. And we need to prove to the state that the oil tank has been removed and a new one has been installed. Well, we have this on our capital plan because our 25 years is up, so it has to be replaced this summer, and we need to prove it to the state that we have removed the tank and replaced it. Well, we don't really use oil in Monroe L. We use gas, because we have a gas line. So the question is, do we even want to replace this oil tank, which is a capital project of like, what, $120,000?
$170,000.
Yeah, almost $120,000, since, and we don't use oil, but there could be a need of, you know, we have dual systems at a couple of our schools, so we can kind of choose back and forth whether or not we're going to play the game of, you know, oil is cheaper, let's do oil.
But will you save $117,000?
No.
Okay.
And we'd have to bond for that. That would be a bonding project. We could remove the tank, what is it?
$21,000.
$21,000, and just remove the tank and say.
And that's concrete work and fixing the slab.
Right, that's everything. We can just remove it and say, "We're just sticking with gas, and we're not going to have the opportunity or the ability to go back and forth between gas and oil."
And then in the future, if we wanted to put a new tank in.
Right.
We had an estimate of about $150,000 if we ever, after we took it out and, you know, put the slab in and everything. And if we wanted to say, "Oh, no, we want to go back to oil," it would cost $150,000.
I've been selling houses since 2004, and I've never had anybody have gas and want to go back to oil ever.
Chances of, that's probably not true. But I wanted to give all your information, give all the information.
Right, no, thank you for that.
No, so this is a question that we need to answer, because obviously, if we proceed.
Can I make a motion? Like, how can you?
Well, yeah, we're going to have to vote on it and what our decision is, so we're trying to get everybody's feeling, because we are going to need to vote, because we, if the vote is we want to go back and forth still, we have to replace the tank. There's no option. It's a state law.
What's the cost comparison again?
It's one, almost 120 to, you know, replace the tank. It's $21,000 just to remove it and be done with it, actually, almost 22. But we have to remove it. There's no option.
We're going to have to do that anyways, because it's, 25 years is up.
Correct. So, you know, so even, it's not like you can just decommission it and leave it in the ground. It actually has to come out.
When was the last time we used it?
Gabby, when do we change to?
2012.
We haven't used oil, so there's no.
There's probably some, there's oil left in the tank.
Right, but we haven't filled it or actively utilized it.
Right, there's sludge probably at the bottom of the tank.
And once we brought the gas line in, because that was part of saving money back then, once we brought it in, we haven't really gone back in. And what other school has the option of Massey?
Massey has the option.
In Massey, we have flipped back and forth. Massey burns, Massey's a bigger building, so it's a little bit more, you can kind of play that flute. With Monroe L, it's, I think, you know, there's a couple issues. The oil's a little bit dirt, oil's dirtier to burn. It kind of wrecks a little bit more havoc on your boilers. You need to do more cleaning. It doesn't heat as evenly, for lack of a better term. It kind of tends to vary, it fluctuates and it varies a little bit more. You know, and the 22, it might be a little less, only because that's the cost of doing concrete work, like, full-on, if you're actually also putting in a tank. And we may not need to do, you know, we don't need to do a vault again. We might just need to fill it, so it might be a little less. We'll see.
But worst-case scenario, you're looking close to 22. Jerry?
What's our current lock-in price for oil? What's our current lock-in price for natural gas? You kind of want me asking?
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay. Oil's at $2.25. Gas runs per cubic foot, and I don't have the number off the top of my head. Do you know if it's more or less? It's still, it's more efficient to burn natural gas.
Yeah, the trick is you also have to factor in BTUs, because you can't take one unit compared to one unit. The BTUs are different oil to gas.
Residentially, you don't have to service the boilers as often for gas as you would for oil.
Right.
So it's same.
Right.
I mean, you're still, you still want to service, we still need to service everything here. I don't think it's going to really impact our servicing. And don't forget, if anything, if we keep the net, if we keep oil at Monroe L and we choose to go to oil, if anything, the servicing may go up a bit, the frequency, because. Of the gas, you mean? No, for, if you go to oil. Right now, we're on natural gas. We've been on natural gas at Monroe L. Since 2012. Since about 2012. I haven't quoted for oil in that building since the budget cycle of 11, 12, so it's been a while. I couldn't even tell you on average how much oil they burned. I'd have to go back.
Would the oil furnaces still stay in place?
Well, the furnaces are dual-fired.
Okay.
Right, so that, I mean, there's no reason to get rid of that at this point. It's just we wouldn't use them. Can we make a motion now?
Yep.
Okay, can I make a motion to get rid of the oil tank, to dig it up and get rid of the oil tank at Monroe L and stick to the natural gas? tank at Monroe L and stick to the natural gas that we're currently using?
So you want to make a motion that we?
Will save us about $100,000 approximately.
Right. So you're making a motion that we do not move forward with a oil tank replacement at Monroe L, but instead just remove the tank and continue, and just operate Monroe L on natural gas?
What she said, yes.
Thank you, John. I have a second. Alan? Any further discussion on this?
John, how much was the new one again, down the road?
150.
Just to go back to what Shannon said earlier, if you look at the cost savings divided by 120,000, you know, is it 120 years, is it 10 years, is it, what is it? I think that's, as, as gas and oil prices keep coming up, I think they're getting narrower and narrower, so we have to consider that math.
Right. But it's not even the apples-to-apples, but ones running more efficiently.
Right. And you have this cost every 25 years.
Exactly, and, right, and to spend an extra $100,000 for a what-if, I think right now it's more prudent that we just, just pull it and not replace it.
And Gabby's point is an important one, too. On oil, the servicing costs are definitely more. We're paying more to clean those burners, yeah, on an ongoing basis, so there's a savings by avoiding going down on oil.
Annually, yeah.
Right.
All right, anybody else?
We have a motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second to not move forward with the oil tank replacement.
It's saving money now. It's saving big dollars now, but it's saving big dollars in the future, too.
Oh, yeah, because you would have that, that same 120,000 if that price holds up, because you have to replace it every 25 years, you're required by law. And I think next year, Stepney's up, but that's not a dual system, so we'll have to replace Stepneys next year.
Gas is not available there?
Font Hollow is still electric only, or is there another one?
Stepney was done last summer.
Stepney was done last summer.
It's Masick.
Oh, it's Masick, sorry, thank you.
And Masick is dual-fired.
Jacquet Hollow's dual, awesome.
Jacquet Hollow's dual, but we haven't bought oil at Jacquet Hollow in, since well before I got here. Font Hollow is gas and electric, yes.
Gas and oil?
Gas and electric.
I don't know. It's, we inherited that.
Right, right, right.
Decision made in 1988.
But so when the time, the 25-year mark hits for Font Hollow, then up the oil tank.
There's no oil.
There's no oil.
There's never been oil.
That's it, there is no oil tank there, yeah.
Let me rephrase it. There may have been an, there must have been an oil tank there at some point.
There is no oil.
At some, in the 60s.
It was, it used to just be electric, and then it was.
No, the original section is electric.
Oh, well, then never mind, there was never an oil tank at Font Hollow.
Okay, all right.
So the only one that doesn't have gas or can't have gas is Stepney, because there's no gas in it, right?
There's no gas on the Newtown road.
Oh. It's not, Old Newtown's fairly close to there, though, fairly, but.
Well, we would have to pay to go up.
Yeah, yeah, you can't go on the road, it matters, yeah.
And I know we looked at it with the Honeywell project, and it really wasn't.
Not happening.
That's how the gas got to Masick, correct?
Right.
Gas got to Masick through Honeywell, and we pretty much have to use gas here through this December, and then we can really play the float at Stepney. I, we, we asked, well, at that point, it was Yankee Gas, we asked them if they had any plans, and they kind of went, no. They had nothing on their drawing board even to run gas up that road or down that road. We can ask again.
Yeah, you never know.
All right, so we have a motion in a second to not move forward with the oil tank replacement, but just to yank the tank, tank out and at a cheaper price of 22,000 and call it a day. All right, all in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes. Do we have anything else this evening?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Is there time for my question for my daughter? Is it true that if we have two or more snow days midterms, that Masick will be canceled?
They're canceled, wow! Wow, Joe, that's very generous.
Wow.
No, we just, just move the date, that's all.
Just moving the dates, we're not canceled.
What is it with all these new, like?
That was in 2010.
I'm canceling school.
I didn't think when I started, yours done, it would go viral, I'm sorry.
I'm canceling school, now midterms are canceled? Wow, these kids are ingenious.
I said, I don't think so, but I will ask.
Just so you that, you know, we, if, if we could, we would call school the night before, I know it helps parents, but our meteorologist this afternoon said, it's, there's so much uncertainty that he doesn't want, he doesn't think it would be prudent to call tonight.
To wait for a 4 o'clock call tomorrow morning.
Oh, yay.
Lucky you.
Yeah, well, but we'd like, but we want to just not, you know, not jump to the.
You're hoping for school?
Yeah.
I took a vacation day tomorrow, just.
To get it by myself.
We're going to have no school.
Yeah, that's always the way it works. All right, hearing nothing else? Do I have a motion towards John? Thank you, second David. All in favor? All righty. Thank you.